Welcome to the City of Newport Regular Meeting of the Board of Commissioners, February 27, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tiffany Myers, our new city clerk, can you please call the roll? Welcome home to Newport.
Thank you. Commissioner Redwansky?
Here.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Here.
Commissioner Rektin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Mayor Goodley?
Here. Personnel orders, Commissioner's Order Number 17.
Commissioner Order R 2023-017, an order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, ratifying the mayor's appointment of Scott Fleckinger to the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Newport, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
John, do you want to add anything, or I'll add comments since it is a mayor's appointment? Scott's here with us tonight. Thanks for your willingness to serve. Scott invested on a house on Monroe, has ties to historic preservation and ties to city government as he served in Alexandria for how many years?
Seven terms.
Seven terms, and having that balance, I think, will serve the board well. So thanks for your willingness to serve. Any questions on the board?
No. Thanks, Scott. Just that Scott is, so the makeup of the board now, we have two people in East Row, and we have two people from the West Side. And what would the other makeup of the neighborhoods be for that board?
John?
We have one from the Dorsary Historic District, one from the West Side Historic District, and I believe Scott. There are two West Side, or Three maybe? I think it's three and two thereabouts. I don't have the exact.
Yeah, I know there's three from the East Side and at least two from the West Side.
With the overall goals that the mayor knows, to continue making sure that our boards represent all areas of town.
Yeah, our goal was absolutely to represent the entire city in every ways, and this goes way towards that. So thanks for your willingness to serve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Goodley?
Yes. Ken made the motion, Mike seconded.
It was Julie seconded.
Commissioner's Order Number 22.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, promoting Joshua Ild to the position of Engineer Medic in the Newport Fire EMS Department effective February 8, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Chief Paluso?
Mr. Mayor, Board, thank you. On January 20th and 21st, we held an engineer's assessment for all eligible candidates. You have to have a minimum of two years on the department before you can test for engineer. After completion of the assessment, Fire Medic Ild finished first. Fire Medic Ild was hired in November of 2020 and has his hands in many different areas of responsibility in the firehouse. Here with Fire Medic Ild tonight, along with many members of his family, but especially his wife Emily, their son Barrett, and it is my absolute pleasure to recommend Fire Medic Joshua Ild for promotion to the position of Engineer Medic in the Newport Fire EMS Department.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions on the board? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Goodley?
Yes. And congratulations. Congratulations. Mm-hmm.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, appointing Jessica Bolton to the position of Building Inspector in the Code Enforcement Department effective March 13, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening.
Brian Stephan.
Brian Stephan, thank you. We're real excited to recommend Jessica Bolton to this position. The city is, as you know, the board knows, we have an expanded jurisdiction building permit program. Just to touch lightly on some of the, what we talked about at the board retreat, we're at almost 200 permits just since January 1. The workload is not slowing down. This is ever-increasing. So this is a big deal for our department and the city to get another qualified inspector into the department. Jessica has an undergrad degree in architecture from UK. She's got over four years' experience in permitting inspection and plan review, so we look forward to having her working with us.
Here, if I could add, I sat through the interview with this position, and I think that Jessica's a very impressive candidate. Not only does she have significant experience working in this role with the county government, she also brings a level of ambition to this job that I think that we talk about all the time, and we had so many retirements, and building a bench here of leaders and department heads and so forth. And Jessica has that makeup and those skills, and she's anxious to get her hands into a lot of different things in the city and really use her expertise here to grow her career. So I think she's a very exciting hire.
Thanks, John. Thanks for sharing that. Any questions on the board? I just want to reinforce what Brian had said. At our board retreat, there was a long discussion about how important this department is and the work that they do of keeping our projects moving forward. And it has a cost center, but it's profit center. It covers its own costs, and it makes us more efficient and lets our projects move forward faster. So thanks for becoming a part of that. As you see our city blossom and all kinds of new projects, you'll be a part of them. So welcome. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Goodley?
Yes. Let's take a five-minute break, just so they can take some photos. And we will be reconvene in five minutes.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Yes. Yeah, Chief, I just, we didn't talk about that in advance, but we always do it, and I feel bad not doing it.
I didn't think about it until, like, are they still sitting there? They go, hey.
(laughing).
One grape.
You're fine. You just couldn't see your face. That's fine.
You're fine. You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're fine.
And again, the biggest driver of that were personnel costs increasing from 21 to 22. And overall revenues exceeded expenditures in the general fund by 2.36 million. Next slide, please. This slide looks at the governmental fund assets. Overall assets were up 5.2 million, and that increase is primarily in unrestricted cash. And the unrestricted cash was due to ARPA money that had been received and had been earned, but just hadn't been spent as of June 30th, 2022. And next slide, please. This slide looks at the operating revenues and expenses for the refuse fund. Revenues were up about 76,000 from the prior year, and expenses were up about 56,000. Similar to the other funds, the refuse fund expense was largely driven by increased personnel costs. All right, that is the full presentation unless anyone has any questions about anything that went over there, the audit in general.
That was incredibly efficient.
I thought to say that.
Well, it's pretty good.
It was pretty great.
And then when it looks like a telephone book and we get it summarized in that few number of slides, and it actually tells the story, which is very productive and positive. Funds and our revenues, unfortunately, our expenses are kind of growing in line with that, but any questions on the board?
No.
I have a comment. But thank you for the presentation. Congratulations to Lenny and Matt and the rest of your folks. This is not easy to do. This is very impressive and no findings, couple little suggestions, little adjustments. I love it. So congratulations. I really, really appreciate your work.
Just to echo what Julie had mentioned, you know, we're very happy, you know, we're very happy, Lenny, to have you and your team here and the work that you do for Newport. So nicely done.
Absolutely. I echo those sentiments, and I do know that our team is doing better with better software and better tools, and it's making the entire system work better. So thanks all for your efforts and your part played tonight.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the chance to work with your city.
Thank you. Now, we come upon the portion of the meeting where is public forum. Anyone having any service, city service issue that they would like to discuss? This is the time. Anyone like to discuss any of the issues? This is the time. All right, seeing none, we're going to move to approval of the minutes.
So moved.
And just for clarity, this is the regular minutes of January 23rd and January 30th and the special call meeting. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. We're moving to old business, second reading of Commissioner's ordinance number one.
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Chapter 72 Parking Regulations, Section 72.10A of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Parking Time Zone Limitations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. For the purpose of the public, can you go ahead and give a brief description of this, John? Since it's a second reading and is...
Yes. So Mayor, as you recall, this was from the previous meeting that we had, the first reading where there were some issues as it relates to 72-hour parking and enforcement. Of course, parking is always a concern within our city. It's frequently talked about, and trying to find a way to make this more efficient, both for the police and also for the residents. Chief, if you'd be kind of...
Yes, sir. We watch 72-hour parking so our streets don't become parking lots. This actual ordinance is going to help us with a game that people play where they just kind of move their vehicles two, three feet at a time. We've had to become very sneaky, and being able to track that, this actually makes it so that I believe it's 50 feet, John, that people will actually have to move their vehicle, which will show the vehicle is actually functioning and not just a disabled vehicle that is stuck on one of our streets for an extended amount of time.
Well, Mayor, as I'm sure the boards have heard, there was a U.S. Supreme Court decision several years ago that said the police were no longer allowed to use tires if they have them in the pan.
Really?
Which makes enforcement difficult. The other issue is the labor chief is saying is we do have people around the city that to circumvent that rule, they'll push their car several inches and then say, well, I'm in compliance and move. So this is just try to avoid...
Good. Any questions on the board? This has been a complicated issue for many years. I know that you, as the police department, have come up with many strategies over the years, and unfortunately, the marking of tires was probably the most efficient one. And having that thrown out as an opportunity makes this difficult, so we're moving on to the next step. So appreciate your efforts. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. New business, Commissioner's Order Number 18.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services provided by the Fire and EMS Department.
So moved. Second.
Chief Paluso?
Mayor, Board, this, we've already acted on this, and due to a slight verbiage disagreement, I guess, we haven't been able to quite implement it yet. So this is, this is hopefully going to take that to the point where we're able to implement this service and begin to reap some of the benefits from it. Just a quick rundown based on their numbers and estimations, year-to-date, we've had 17 auto accidents with injuries in the city. Seven without, and we've had one auto accident versus pedestrian, we've had, we've had, and a car fire, year-to-date. So total, it would be roughly $13,600 that would be billed. And that would, that would lead to about $11,000 that they look to collect from that 13-6. And then their 20% is roughly $9,800 is where we would potentially be with income if we could get this program going. So this is just more of the verbiage that they want, hopefully, and is a breakdown for you to show exactly what the rates are, and that, that should hopefully get us rolling with this real soon.
Anyone else on the board?
Mayor, we, earlier this year, we had approved the contractual arrangement with Fire Recovery USA, which set out all the parameters and the charges and what they would do. And this company is located in California, and they were giving Chief Paluso the runaround. He kept coming to me. They wanted to put it in the ordinance, and I said, that's not appropriate to do it during the contractual arrangement. So finally, in all this back and forth, we agreed to just implement the provisions to allow that to occur, and that's what this order really is just all about.
Understood, and you gave a great presentation on this before. I'm not going to ask you to rehash that. The outcome of this is that we actually get revenue that we're not getting now. So there's a reimbursement, and it's, and it's going to be a good thing for our citizens. It's going to help our taxpayers, and thanks for your efforts and diligence in making this happen.
And just, just one more time, this, we're not, this is not for residents. This is just for non-resident out of town that mostly is going to be affected by travelers on 471.
Right, but we're not going to be paying for their...
Correct.
The out-of-town people that are traveling through our community.
Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you again for your efforts. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. Commissioner's Order Number 20.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing issuance up to 50 million maximum aggregated principal amount taxable industrial building revenue bond series 2023, and in order to assist CPX Building C-North LLC, or it assigns to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of industrial building facility located within the City of Newport, Kentucky, and to improve said facility, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of said bonds, authorizing trust indentures appropriate for the protection and disposition of such revenues, and further to secure the payment of said bonds, authorizing a bond purchase agreement, authorizing home office payment agreements, and authorizing the execution of any further necessary instruments.
So moved.
Second.
John?
So you're on, uh, you're on.
You've been in court way too much.
Out of the courtroom, my friend.
This is part of the industrial revenue bond that was previously approved by the city commission as it relates to the ovation complex, as the board is aware that sometimes it's done in phases as they build these properties. I think Mr. Spoh is here to answer any specific questions the board may have about that.
Any questions on the board?
We're going to be doing a number of these with each one of the, you don't need to get up deck, but we're going to be doing a number of these with each one of the buildings that are done down there. What would be beneficial to us is to have a, an overlay and to say, these are the bonds for Building C, D, E, F. Okay? Is that fair?
Yes, and Mike Borfer is here.
Yeah, I was addressing it to him, and he came...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. It's all right. Not only right now, you know, just as we do these in the, yeah, all right.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, color-coded. Ones that are complete, ones that are still outstanding.
Color-coded? My God, he just added a huge weight burden to you.
That's right. I like visuals. Any other questions on the board?
That's great. Thank you.
So again, for the public, why these come in gradually is because they don't want to bond and borrow and pay interest on money until they're able to actually start the project. So it's, all these things occur in the phases when needed. So we probably have at least four more of these? At least four more? So, all right, and no other comments on the board? Please call the roll. Oh, Julie has one.
Yeah, I did, actually. I, I did have questions prepping for this over the weekend, and I talked to John Hayden this morning and had all my questions answered, and I, yeah, one of the questions was, is this part of the bigger project? And he assured me, yes, it is. So my questions were answered, and that was good.
Great.
But I like color coding, too.
Okay, Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. Commissioner's Order Number 21. It's going to sound very familiar.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance up to 50 million maximum aggregated principal amount taxable industrial building revenue bond series 2023, in order to assist CPX Building C-South LLC, or it assigns to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping, equipping of industrial building facility located within the City of Newport, Kentucky, and to improve said facility, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of said bonds, authorizing trust indentures appropriate for the protection and disposition of revenues, and to further secure the payment of said bonds, authorizing a bond purchase agreement, authorizing home office payment agreements, and authorizing execution of any further necessary instruments.
So moved.
Second.
I think I can summarize this. One is the North Building, and one is the South Building. Other than that, the words are exactly the same. Any other questions on the board?
I do, similarly, I got a call over the weekend about this issue and had to reassure people that this is not dealing with VS. This is not a Victoria Square Bond issue. This is a bond issue with the Corporex and the Ovation Site. And I reassured those people that that's what this was, so, anyway, thanks. Thanks, Tom.
No problem. Anyone else? Please call the roll, Tiffany.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. Commissioner's Order Number 24.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, declaring certain personal property of the City of Newport as surplus, and authorizing disposal in accordance with state law.
So moved.
Second.
One is private surplus, and one is police surplus. And I see both chiefs are here to answer any questions as far as that. This is fairly routine and quick, it's no longer usable in service for very long. A lot of times with police, we have vehicles that are either go-to-beat vehicles, or we have vehicles that have been used in the service at one point in time that no longer makes sense for us to use anymore. I know that Chief Fangman does a really good job of driving a vehicle as long as humanly possible. I see some of the cars that we've perched cycle out that we, a lot of we keep as backups because as much as our officers use the vehicles, it's not uncommon that they get in vendor benders and things like that. So we do have some in the pool, but after a while, they outlive their useful life and they go into surplus.
Anything of importance that we should know about in regard to what's being disposed of? Chief Fangman?
One, there was some talk a few years ago, I referenced some of the Hummers that we had, for instance, a lot of people asking how much we pay for them. One of the vehicles, I believe, in this situation, is it's called a Unimog. These are things we've gotten free from the military, knowing that when we do not use them anymore, we can sell them or get rid of them for taxpayer making money off of them and helping us purchase other vehicles with that. I just know I've had some questions in the past, and I like to educate people that these were free vehicles that we can now, if we're not going to be able to use, the military said, we don't want them back, we can make a profit for the city.
I know those were freed. I did have a question. When they give those to us, are they with any strings at all? Do we have to use them or keep them or do anything with them for a defined duration?
Not to my knowledge. I was the point of contact for the program where annually I did have to ensure that we still had the property on our books, but no, no strings attached. The only, we do have one Hummer left. There is some of the military vehicles that cannot be released into the general public due to their armament, which I like having at least one because we use it as a people blocker for large events and festivals. You guys see it on Riverfest, we block right down by the port of entry to make sure no vehicles can get in where a lot of people are.
Thank you. Chief Paluso?
So this is, this is essentially just things that have accumulated throughout the years that we're just looking to dispose of.
Nothing very specific that people would be excited about?
I don't believe so.
All right. And then, we're going to sell these on online auctions like we have in the past?
The police vehicles are going to the city site and no one will use online auctions except on a separate site because they did some research and realized that that was the kind of vehicle that you can't argue on a separate site, which is how I wrote it into the order.
Great. All right, thank you. Any other questions on the board? Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. Commissioner's Order Number 25, more of the same.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, declaring certain personal property of the City of Newport as surplus, personal property, and authorizing sale in accordance with state law.
So moved. Second.
This one, this one has a street sweeper in it, Ray. Want to speak to that?
This is all stuff from the public works. What we have is four different vehicles. Well, one's not a vehicle, three vehicles. It's a 2001 Sterling Street Sweeper, and you drive it one time, it breaks down, it's way past its time. And like I said in an early meeting, we have a new street sweeper on the way to replace that, just on that exact day when it's arriving. Another one's a 2002 Ford F-250, broken frame, it's rusted out, the whole frame's destroyed, so that's on the move. And then a 2005 Ford F-350 has a blown engine, so that's going to the side. And then the last thing is a 2000 outside cooling machine. That's basically, if you've been in any festival, it's like a spritzer. We've never used it since we've had it. I think we took possession maybe five or six years ago, maybe been longer. I don't know the exact time, but that's, that's a basis of what we have.
That's a misprint on one of this. It says 2022 Ford truck, and I'm hoping we're not flipping trucks that quick.
I don't have that on mine.
Yeah, okay. It should be 2002, all right.
You're confirming we're not selling any 2002s cars?
News to me.
Any other questions on the board? Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. Commissioner's Order Number 26.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, authorizing and accepting the bid of, authorizing and accepting in the city manager to enter to an executed contract services agreement with Regal May Clean Service, Inc. for cleaning of the city building.
So moved. Second.
Mayor, we had Regal May for probably Regal more than a decade or more. We've only received two bids, as you'll see in your packet. The other company did come in about $3,000 cheaper, but the big difference on that is that they weren't going to take care of any of the supplies. So at this point, it's part of the bid package that they had to supply all of the items that we use here around the building, including cleaning supplies, toilet paper, things of that nature. So what we looked into the direction of the contract that, that apparent savings on paper would not be a savings at all for the city if we had to be the one buying all the supplies or reimbursing them for it. So we're going to continue our contract with the Regal May.
Questions on the board? Clearly, supplies were going to exceed that amount.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Oh, you're going to pay for that?
Can we call the roll?
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. Commissioner Order Number 28.
An order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, accepting the bid of and authorizing the city manager, Thomas J. Fermi, to enter into and execute a contract with Eaton Asphalt Paving Company for the 12th Street Parking and Sidewalk Improvement Project.
So moved. Second.
Ray?
Ebert.
Ebert. Mr. Ebert.
Like Tiffany said, this is for the 12th Street Park. That's my assistant, Lauren. And Buena Vista Park, it's an improvement project. It's, from my understanding, has been, been talked about for like two years. So the area, if anybody doesn't know, it's the area, do y'all have a handout?
Yeah. Nope.
It's east of the exercise equipment, and if you can see from your handout, I made a bigger version here that the public can come up after the meeting and look at. I'll, I'll stay around and answer any questions. But the project was put out to bid with Eaton Asphalt being the winner. If you don't know, Paul Michaels, that does a lot of work for us, was bought out by Eaton Asphalt. So it's actually Paul Michaels, too, is who's going to do it. As the lowest bidder was $53,976. Other projects that they, that they're doing for us, they, they just did the East Forest Street repaving for us, that was a few months ago. They're going to be working on Google Alley, reserving that, and that's going to start in April. And they've done some other projects for them, so we're familiar with them. At this time, I like to take the opportunity to thank the Renewport Group, which has partnered with the city on the project and has contributed 25,000 towards that. We have a few individuals in the audience tonight. So basically, what's happening is the area east of it, of the playground, or the exercise equipment, has just been kind of a dead area. It's gravel, mixed grass, garbage gets thrown there all the time. But what it's going to be is it's going to have a sidewalk continuing from the sidewalk that goes around the close region of Buena Vista Park now. It's going to have the sidewalk going around the park, it's going to have grass in the middle, and some of the neighborhood groups that got with us and want to know about planting trees, brush, whatever, that's in future talks, so that, that may happen. There's going to be seven parking spaces down the road, there's going to be a new curb, like I said, the sidewalk, there's a new curb, there's two new catch basings with new piping, and seven new places. Right now, it's kind of a free-for-all, how do people park down there? So it's going to clean it up a lot. So that's kind of where we're at on that, and I, any questions? I'm here.
Just to comment that this is a park that I see it used quite a bit. Remember last year, when I would go walking over there and canvassing, you always see kids that would be using that park. I think this is an exciting development, and it's a good partnership with Renewport and kind of gets rid of the eyesore of that, of that parking lot as well for the betterment of the public. So, thank you.
Correct. Appreciate it.
Julie, Ken?
Well, I would just say thank you, guys, and all the membership for helping to make this happen, and thank you for this presentation.
Yeah, this has been on the radar for the West Side Citizen Group for a long time and the Renewport folks, and I really want to commend you for your patience. I know there was a lot of discussion about other utilized, other issues there, but I think we've come upon something that we can all agree upon, and it's positive, so I'm thankful. That's all.
Yeah, it's always great to see our groups work together, collaborate, come up with great solutions, and this is a great solution. It's going to increase the usage of the park, and it's going to increase the aesthetic nature of the park. However, we got to pave that street, too. That, we, we're going to have to pave that street as well, and I don't think that's...
Take note of that.
I, I don't think it's included in this, but that street is not in great shape, and we're going to make that, that corridor look good. We need to make it all look good, so.
I agree.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kadouli?
Yes. All right, that gets us through the legislation of this evening and, and moves us into department head comments. Before we go to department head comments, I noticed that Christine Russell with Triad is in the audience, and you didn't speak during public comments, but I didn't know if you came to actually speak tonight in any way or introduce yourself. You're so quiet.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Christine Russell with Northern Kentucky Triad. We're the economic development organization for Boone, Canton, and Campbell Counties. I am not here for any particular purpose other than Lee Crew, our CEO, and me are trying to get out to the major city council meetings, the county commission meetings, and just hear what's going on in the cities, learn, listen, so we can take that information back to Triad and understand the priorities and, and concerns of the community. So, thank you for having me. I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions. I didn't come with anything prepared to, to present.
Well, thank you for being here. I just wanted to draw attention to that. I know that the Triad group, the entire board of which I serve, put me on the spot a couple meetings ago and said, what are the cities hearing and what are the challenges? And I, and the plan that you guys are working on actively engages cities, brownfields, and puts focus on some of the challenges in the community, and I just wanted people to know that there were years where Triad was viewed as not necessarily engaging in cities, and that is a change, that's a trend that is going to change.
Absolutely.
And a mission statement.
Yes, absolutely. The partnership with, with our communities is very strong and extremely important, so we, we appreciate you for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, before you leave, it might be good to share that, that plan, you know, with the community. You know, and even, even having a presentation here so that the, the public could see it and, you know, if you do that, would be excellent.
We would love that opportunity. Mayor, why don't we work with you and your staff to get that scheduled so we can bring the appropriate materials and the appropriate people?
Absolutely. When I saw you, I just didn't see you until the meeting had started.
Yeah, no worries.
And I had spoken to Lee about actually doing that at some point. So I think we're all on the same page, and we will look forward to having you.
Fantastic.
At a meeting in the next couple months.
Great. Well, I look forward to being back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so where are we going to go next? Lenny, what you got?
All right. I'll try to be brief here. I am going to have you guys reference the audit, if you don't mind. So I made it a special call and I gave this wonderful outlook on how general fund performed in the 2022 audit, and then we see, you know, $14 million negative net position. If you turn to page 27 for a moment, the auditors do a good job of summarizing the audit in what they call net position. The Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, they dictate what we, how we have to report net position. I like to talk about like the fund balance. So the net position, as you look up in assets, it includes your capital assets, net of depreciation. There's a lot of other figures in there that, that are true to our net position, but kind of get, you know, for a more simplified version, where we are on the fund level. So in particular, where it says total liabilities, it's about three quarters of the way down, it's $78 million in liability. Sorry, I'm under government activities also, that first column. I wish I'd had the...
Page 27, Lenny?
Yeah, or 24.
That's why I can't find it.
Sorry, sorry. I want to reference page 27 in a moment. My apologies.
Goodness.
I was looking for that 75 million, I couldn't find it.
Now I see it.
Okay. That's 78 million in liabilities. A little bit above that, you see the 33 million and the 9 million. Well, that's the net pension liability, and there's that OPEB liability. OPEB is an acronym for other post-employment benefits. That's our share of the health insurance for the state retirement. So we all know the, you know, the condition of the state Commonwealth, state pension system. It is improving. Five to six years ago, GASB said we have to, every entity that participates has to include that in their financials. That's the main driver for what you see here. Government activities, these are, these don't include the Health Insurance Fund. When we go to 27, you'll see what's included in that. Business-type activities, that used to be the levy and the refuse fund. Now it's just the refuse fund once the garage was sold. So if we now go to page 27, this is more on the fund level, kind of what I discussed the other, the other day. And down at the, you know, here are, these are the funds that comprise the, what they call government funds, our general fund, community development, capital projects, and the TIF. Health insurance is reported separately in these back pages. We have two funds that tie into the legacy pension system. But here, you can see down at the bottom, you can see that, that 2.2 million improvement in our fund balance. So just kind of a little difference between what a fund balance is and our, and our net position. And Tom always likes to mention, as we talk about those liabilities with our pension system, Tom's not here tonight, but we make, we pay every dollar that's owed. It has nothing to do with us not making our payments. It's, every entity has to report that large number. It's, we don't have to pay that immediately or anything like that, so maybe someday we'll see that hit a positive. So that's all I wanted to do, is just give a little detail on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Chief Paluso?
Thank you.
Chief?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Don Hade?
Mayor, board, what we've, as the board is well aware and the public is, that there was a planning session slash a board retreat here in the building. About eight and a half hours long, and it only had about 30 minutes of that being an executive session talking about developmentally sensitive deals. So it was eight hours of conversation that was open to the public. We had several members of the community that stayed almost the whole eight hours. I think some may have stayed the entire time. And it was a good opportunity for our new board members to hear some of the things that the city may or may not have been familiar with, but also just have a good conversation about a lot of things. There was a lot of issues covered pretty quickly over that amount of time. However, I think that it goes a long way toward our goal of being more transparent and making the public more aware. There's always questions about, you know, what's going on with this? And people want to know, and increasing transparency is always an important thing that we've done. In the last several years, we've created Open Gov, where people can look at our budget and get into the details and the weeds, some of those things. They want to know that. All of our citizen board meetings are now not only broadcast as they happen, but they're archived on YouTube for residents to take a look at later if they feel like. All of our regular city convention meetings, of course, are broadcast live as well and being archived. Those are the things that weren't always the case in the past. So we're trying to take as many steps as we can to increase that transparency and build engagement with the public as well. And the other thing is, Mr. Ebert presented the parking position of Buon Vista, and we have a plan of improving parks all over the city. So as the boards aware, Buon Vista Park and Ralph Muswell received new playground equipment that I know that we're sure raised frustration, we all thought the equipment hadn't arrived as quickly as we'd like it to, but we're still hoping that it will be out there. Very assumed that kids can enjoy that all spring long, and we're going to look at the next budget cycle, other playground equipment which should improve. Also working with our community partners, people like Renewport, those individuals who dedicate a lot of their time for no money to raise funds, to plant trees, do those types of things. So I think that it would move us as a city to have more engagement like that from the residents and get more involvement at that level with individuals as well. So there's a lot of positive things going on in the city. We certainly appreciate our residents and not only getting the time to watch these meetings that we come out and spend your Saturday listening to a lot of information. It's a hard ask for people to do, but people may want to do that. It shows interest in the city and projects we have in their communities. They're happy to be part of this community. So those are positive things that we have going on.
Thank you, John. I went a little out of order. Dan?
A couple of weeks ago, Captain Conklin and I went to lunch with our contract photographer, Steve Thomas. And Steve is renowned for taking photographs of the skylines and interesting buildings and stuff in the city or in the greater Cincinnati area. He likes to take photographs from rooftops or vantage points. The picture you see on the back wall, the location we went to, he had several pieces on display. He was asking me which one I liked personally, and I was answering him, and he said, "Which one do you think the city would like?" And I indicated the one that's hanging because it had the best view of the rooftops of Newport looking over into the downtown skyline. So he decided, based on that, he was going to donate the photograph to the city, which he did, and then we had it mounted on the glass plate. And that's why that's now hanging in the back of the room. And it doesn't crowd the clock in the way the organ would do. And the one that I donated to the city a few years ago was fine, and the organ has put it on this wall, but that's why that is there now.
That's excellent. And are you now the curator of art for the chambers? No, that's great. And, you know, Steve is a good partner. He takes a lot of our photographs for different events and donates a lot of his time, in addition to being compensated occasionally. So thank you, Steve, for that. Tiffany Myers, do you have anything to say? It's your first meeting.
Uh, no, just been busy getting ready for all the meetings I have going on, so I'm good.
Good. Thank you. All right. Chief, did I miss you? I did, I bounced over.
Or now you have me, but I've, thank you. I don't have any.
All right. On the board. Mike?
Yeah. In that planning session, one thing that we talked about, I know a lot of folks have expressed frustration over the years, is our website. That is in the works. That was something that we discussed. And one thing that will be in there is a event calendar, so that'll be very exciting. So look for that in the coming months. I think they'll be really good. I hope everybody has a safe Bach Fest weekend. This is a big, a big weekend in our area. I actually took a second place medal in a home brewing contest. There'll be a formal award ceremony at Moreland Lager House on Friday at 3:00 PM. Feel free to stop out. I think it's a great opportunity to show that Newport also has a strong brewing heritage, even if it's just on the home brewing level, so. With that, that's all I've got.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Julie?
I do. I also wanted to comment on the planning session, board retreat. It was very informative. City's already done a pretty good job of onboarding, I think, especially with Mike and me, and that's been appreciated as well. But this was kind of like drinking from a fire hose, you know? It was pretty intense and a lot of things were discussed. I really appreciate the people that attended. See some of you here again tonight and some of the folks watching probably as well. One of the things that was, and I understand why, just for the sake of the time that we had, we didn't have the opportunity for interaction, you know, with the public. And I'm quite sure that those who attended are interested in some of these topics. And I just really hope that we can continue, whether one-on-one or different ways to have dialogue about those. There are some big things coming up for us, and I was grateful to see that some of the things that are really near and dear to me, including public safety, housing, that's a big one, you know, economic development, and of course, quality of life. A lot of these issues and many levels of them are already in the works, and there's more to come. I think each of us will have, you know, certainly a lot of input on, on these, and I hope to continue to talk to many of you and invite those of you that I haven't spoken with to, to please help me provide that opportunity because it's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Ken?
Yeah, I have to reiterate that. Chiefs and everybody, the staff that participated in that planning session was excellent, and the participation was wonderful, the reports and, and all of that. The takeaways that I have would be similar to what Julie said. There was, there was a lot discussed, but I believe that the city manager and the administration have now some firm ideas of achievable activities that can happen within the next year. And I'm looking forward to seeing something back from the manager, if you would convey to him a list of those things that he felt were consensus-driven and that we can begin acting on, and maybe a timeline on those, when we might be able to accomplish it. The one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and it speaks to housing a little bit, tomorrow night, the West Side Citizens Coalition meets at a new location. So don't go to Faith and the Faith Church on York Street. Go to Halpy Engineering Building. It's at the corner of Ninth and Lowell, or Ninth and Route Nine. And it'll begin at 7:00 PM. I'll bring some brownies. Plain brownies, nothing special in the brownies. And so that's tomorrow night, the West Side Citizen Coalition meeting. The main topic for discussion is about Victoria Square. So if you have opinions about that and those type of things, please, please attend. It's always good to see a lot of people come out for those meetings and the leadership of that. I'm so pleased to see so many people involved in stepping up to the plate and leading that group. So that's all I got, Tom. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. I do want to share that the Newport Wildcats won 74 to 46 over Beechwood tonight. That's something to cheer about. And I too want to cheer about our, whatever you call it, planning session, retreat.
Summit.
Summit. It's got all kinds of names, but one thing I can tell you, there was very little time not filled by words. We took five-minute breaks, restroom breaks, every two hours. We only had 20 minutes for lunch. We actually had some of the developers having to wait to give presentations. In the end, the entire time was filled. And it was filled by our professionals, our professional staff. Our team did a great job. Every single individual that came in and presented, came in prepared, they had a plan. We didn't interject until they got through, and then we asked them questions. So they gave a complete report, many of, many times had answered all the questions we would have had. Other times, we had additional questions. But there's a lot of work that's in the process, and I think that it was helpful for us to see all the people that are, and the level of competency that our staff has. So all those things kind of shown through for anybody that was able to attend. Also want to share that the purpose of this being down on the floor and us not being at the dais is to make it more close, more informal. We do not record those meetings because sometimes people get a little more comfortable in the audience as well, and it captures things that really aren't necessarily things that we want to have captured because of the informal nature of the caucus meetings and those types of presentations.